Madam Mayor, it's your meeting.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God-
God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to look at this, or do we have any additions or deletions?
Mayor, I'd like to add Budget Amendment Number 17 to the consent agenda.
Okay. Any others?
Okay, I would move to add Budget Amendment Number 17 in the amount of $2,500 to the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And therefore I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
I'd like to comment on that first.
Sure.
Yes. I just want to say good work in giving mutual aid to the community myself. I think it's very important and good, good first approach. Thank you.
Lawrence, I couldn't hear that. I don't know if anyone else could. I could not understand.
I was just saying, I appreciate the fact that we got mutual aid for our show and pregnancy that was a good first meeting and well even.
Yes, I agree. Yes, thank you.
Mutual approval.
The votes you can add on this type of consent.
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
Okay, did we have any, anyone who had sounded public comments?
Yes.
Would you read those at this time?
The first one is Glenn Offball of 103 Ratcliffe Court. I would like to express some concerns regarding the town council considering the closed Dancenow Park's golf course. I have been playing it off all over Gilbert, Forsyth, and North Beach, South Carolina. I know no courses closed with the exception of Grandover, and I understand that the hotel is closed. The current number of cases of this current virus in Gilbert County is 172, which represents .032% of the county population. There have been tragically 13 deaths, which represents .002% of the county population. Your chances of getting killed in an auto accident are 1,000 times greater than the chances of dying from this virus. All of the golf courses, I have been playing and instituted new guidelines to address this infection. They are: one person to a cart wiping down carts after each use; one person in the clubhouse, staying six feet from customers; credit card swipes without handling money; closed rules and dining areas to take out only; leaving the pen in the cup with the face so that the ball does not go to the bottom of the cup; no rates in the tracks. I have heard that the staff is concerned about contracting this virus. Employees doing golf course maintenance and golf cart movement really have no contact with players, with the exception of the one person accepting payment six feet from customers. I don't understand these major concern masks and gloves will even be utilized, but basically every other track standard equipment contains a cloth and all the other courses open. It seems to be a meteoric reaction that is most, most likely not really protecting anyone and will ultimately result in a loss of revenue. I would urge you to reconsider this decision and open up the golf course. This is pretty much all. The next one is Ellen Wolf at 100 Violet Lane. My name is Ellen Wolf and I live on 100 Violet Lane in the Cedarwood subdivision, which makes me a decent tailor. I have lived at this address since 1992. I used to live in Forest on the north back in the 70s and 80s. Dancenow is my home, and I have seen it grow at a slow and steady pace. I love how the downtown area has developed and I love the sidewalks, print part, and more. And I enjoy the historical character of Dancenow. The Castleton Village proposal does not fit the Dancenow as I have known and looked at over the decades. I particularly oppose the commercial component and the high population density of the proposed project on the Johnson Farm property. Dancenow population is about 4,000, adding 2,000 would change the character of Dancenow currently. There are not enough schools to accommodate this increase. It would add traffic and place a lot of stress on garbage collection, fire stations, town government, and churches. Castleton Village in its present form would also remove the historic Armstrong House, which I hate to see. I also think that the Johnson Farm development plan should go hand in hand with the county's vision for Dancenow. Currently, the planning seems to go in a different direction as to their visions for the future. I strongly am positive not only because of the Castleton Village proposal, but also for what it would do to the area racks out of coffee on 415 Main Street that Dr. Davis has put up herself. The next one is Katie Gunnerson at 4648 Danks Road Drive. Dear Town Council, firstly, thank you for having this meeting available electronically so we can all attend. Safety and health are certainly most important right now. In March, there were many questions posed to council regarding possible LPO, and we ask that when council comes back after studying all these issues, definitive answers to all the questions are answered before moving forward with the vote. I would like to know the progress gained on these issues and to understand both how and when we will be informed the answer to the questions. Will some private public meeting help? On the townspeople's side, several of us have been also independently researching for towns and cities facing a similar future. And the results of this digging has been telling. We are preparing this research, and we are hopeful it will help council gain insight. However, we have been unable to find any product anywhere near 450 acres. Again, we are eager to hear about what your findings are. I would like to ask if the results of the survey that was launched in the March 10th meeting will be presented publicly? If so, how will the results of the second comprehensive land survey also be released? Thank you and stay well. Susan Myers at 314 Pierce Drive. I am trying to understand this pud's only to a bullet stem and process such on how it will impact our town. I appreciate your patient and repetitive answers and help citizens understand. To help how we interpret our small meetings and the one council meeting are not misunderstood or shared incorrectly, can you please help confirm, clarify, correct, and answer what is below? As it was stated at the latest council meeting, how can people be ordered if something is cut if it is not defined until after it is solved? It is my understanding it is supposed to give people more opportunity for input for what they may see, but ultimately only if the developer is willing. The law for the pud would be what they plan to put on each area zone for designated use, but the details of such are at the discretion of the developer. Can you please confirm this as an accurate interpretation? A few other questions would be if there is a minimum for a pud seeks to be the only priority defined as such, which is why it is there not a maximum candidate? How many communities in more in size of Dancenow have sold a 400 to 500 acre area as pud? If any, have they been successful? As also asked in the meeting, what is the acreage of the few other residential puds already approved and built in Dancenow? It seems in using those or reference, it would be like comparing buildings instead versus the college campus. I do have a few questions I would like clarified and explained to all trying to understand so the translation is not skewed, but these are seem to be the priority at this point. One of the other questions concerns being the entire pud being discussed, voted, did not come of word, did not come about on the council agenda until the inquiry for a pud came about from time and back in November. It is my understanding since that point, there were two council meetings during the holidays with intentions of voting on it in January. It seems once the residents remain aware, began the concerns and worries expressed to the council since February were not researched, taken into consideration during those two meetings. I hope the council recognizes the significance and importance this is on the citizens and takes proper steps to provide quality answers and sound opinions before voting on such significant impacts. The next one is Beth Hammer at 2120 Gilbert College Room. Good evening, council members. I understand how we are in a contested time and we have to look out, which is why there is a town council meeting on the 2nd now. I believe some things can be resolved on this platform and some not. City of Greensboro had theirs last week on their community tour, but when I read the agenda, I didn't see any hot topic items. It was mostly funding. I know there are things on our agenda that can easily be settled in this format, however, I believe the pud vote isn't enough. I would like you to consider abstaining or devoting regarding pud until we get back to a time when everyone can be present at that wishes to be. This is something so big that it would change our town forever and after we've made these decisions. Sitting behind a camera in a empty room is the best option for our town. There is something to be said about a room full of people vote on both sides of the issue. At the March 10th meeting, there were only 12 of us that had signed up to contest to speak, but there were so many more that got up and gave the opportunity. Most did speak against the pud for various reasons. The new council platform doesn't give the opportunity for those who don't use technology to voice their concerns or even attend a meeting. The ten minutes of this meeting is also acknowledged by a number of viewers, and they can be anywhere in the world. At the March 10th meeting, somebody came up that had piqued my interest. It was said that up to 2008, there was pud bombing at our LPO, and somehow during a rewrite of that, it was left out. Mr. Johnson presented in his slides showing that there are already a few neighborhoods that are technically pud neighborhoods, and he specifically pointed out Jordan Creek. If I'm right, Jordan Creek was built after 2008. How can that be considered a pud? This shows that we can build neighborhoods under the pressure of the town without changing our current values. This will still allow developers to develop within Dancenow, and they can present it to the planning board. I also want to bring up other developments of things going on in the area. The 22 acres on Matthew Road has been due to diligence, a huge parcel on Gate City Boulevard between Adams Farm and Gilbert College Road sold pre-auctioning. I don't know what they will be building on these parcels, but I can tell you that it will be saturated based on the talent they are paid for. Central is getting ready for affordable housing. They are building what appears to be elevator tracks behind publics with what appears to be forced to restore. How many additional apartments are being built here? Look at a few, look a few miles down Gilbert College to the other side of Wendover and stop the whole start of the plant.
We're getting some complaints about being able to hear. Would you like me to use the telephone to find them?
I don't want to spend them. I don't, I don't know. Robert Frederick, 706 Rattendale Road. Council and mayor, I have nothing to find to you in your state and in your home. I'd like to tell you a short personal story. I am walking out in the middle of the night. I was down with a train horn. I don't find it comforting. I find it disturbing. I find it disturbing because it literally disturbs my sleep. This happens several times a night. This time of year, sometimes the train horn also wakes up birds. They start to sing. After about 20 minutes, they stop singing and go back to sleep too. That is, until the next train comes. That's the end of my story. But mine isn't the only story about people losing sleep here in Dancenow. There are hundreds of us who are disturbed by the train horn every night. Of course, there are other communities in North Carolina and across our country that also have trains passing through at night. Turns out so far, over 800 of them have filed the train. Why doesn't Dancenow? There's a federal law to be served. That law establishes what are called quiet zones. Here in North Carolina, there are quiet zones in Asheville, Apex, Meburne, Rock County, Salisbury, and Appleton, and Fayetteville is working on it too. And one of the reasons these communities have filed out the train horn is so their residents can sleep at night. Now, I know you all want to be careful on how staff spends its time and taxpayer money. It turns out establishing quiet zones doesn't take much of either, and it's still safe. That's because even in a quiet zone, the train operator will still sound the horn. There's reason to, such as when someone is on the tracks. Look, there are a lot of things in this world that people lose sleep over. You can get rid of this one. It wouldn't just help me with my sleep. It will help hundreds of us here in Dancenow. Please, council, help us sleep better at night. Please start a process to create quiet zones at the railroad crossing at Dillon and Oakdale Roads. Thank you for your consideration. May peace and quiet be with us all. Well, there's one more. The last one is from Patrick Bradley at 107 O'Neill Court, and it's just a question. It says, would the appearance of more land in Dancenow, isn't it more rent and have other ways to make certain that the town road is managed properly?
Mayor, this is Professor Wolf. I did have trouble understanding those public comments. The audio was cutting in and out a little bit. For the clerk, please put a copy of those written public comments in all of the council members' box so we can have them, please.
She already emailed it.
She emailed it out earlier.
Well, I've got the email, but could you put a hard copy in at least my box?
Thank you, Katie. With no other public comments, we will move on to the old business of the public hearing, considering the text amendment to the Land Development Ordinance. Matthew?
Yes, Mayor, I'm off camera, but I would like to suggest that this be continued until a regular council meeting without further advertising. Make a motion to continue that vote for May 19th.
Second.
What, is that, excuse me, will that be in the Civic Center at 6:30?
Yes.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And under new business, Kenny, would you lead us in the discussion of a public hearing date to consider the amendment to the Code of Ordinance, Section 52?
Yes, Mayor and Council, in order to comply with the executive order 124 issued by the State of North Carolina, towns are asked to modify their water insurance orders to include the state emergency section. Basically, this section gives the town manager and the guidance of the public works director to alter or spin, modify any sections in there relating to billing, continuation of services, and so forth collections. So therefore, I'm requested to set a public hearing on May 19th, 2020 at Civic Center to amend Chapter 52, Operational Water and Superse.
I'd like to make a motion that the public hearing date for the amendment to town ordinance, Governor's Ordinance, is set for 52, Operational Water, and Waifu's Justice for the May 19th meeting, favor pending.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Kenny, if you'll now go to the next public hearing date request?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the next item is to request and set a public hearing date for the 2021 budget. I'm requesting along with the Finance Director to set the public hearing date for June 16th, 2020 at the Civic Center.
Again, again, that's at 6:30 in the Civic Center?
Yes, ma'am.
I would make that motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Kenny, now if you'll move on to the consideration of waiving the daily deposits less than 500?
Yes, the next item is a change in our policy. Basically, it allows staff to make deposits. Actually, we're exempted from making deposits of less than $500. Typically, what we do is we make daily deposits, so anything less than $500 could be actually kept here until the next day. So I'd like permission to counsel to waive that section of the policy. What I'll be there in the USF, here in St. Louis, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Kenny, we'll move on to the committee reports with your manager's report first.
Yes, I gave you a project status report. Basically, Oakdale Park Mill, I tried to make contact with the owner this week and had a response back from him. I will follow up with him, give you this week to check. I got Paul Blanchard here, and he can give you sort of update on the East Main sidewalk in Eastport.
Well, there was the abstract in the package. I guess everyone's read that as far as the two work. They did pour the debt on the new bridge on East Walk Road. They should be putting expansion joint, but the joint's in on this Thursday. They can give it seven days to cure. And the major difference on East Main Street, you know, curb and gutter installed this time in back of, particularly in the north side.
I had a little, I had hearing, Paul, but I would like to say the curbing on East Main Street looks great. I don't know if y'all been by to see it. It looks wonderful.
It does.
Kenny, when you speak to the owner of the property, managers of Oakdale Mill, I hope you mention that there is a lot of mowing that needs to be done down there. I was there last week.
Yeah, I'll mention it too. The Oakdale sidewalk has been put on hold. Our recreation maintenance facility building has been put on hold for the next fiscal year. And the flowers, welcome to Dancenow flowers sign and that one. It will start actually, we've got the surveyor, it should be out next week to survey it, and from that point, go for the footing. And we have purpose stories out there for the legislature and the brand.
Right. Um, the, um, that flowers bakery sign, Kenny?
Ma'am.
Hear me, because I'm having a real hard time hearing you guys, so I apologize if I'm asking something you've already said. But I just noticed on the report, is the town staff going to pour those footings?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good for them. That's great. And I don't guess, I know we've moved the recreation maintenance facility to the 2021 budget, but is there an anticipated bid date on yet?
Not till the budget's approved, we won't set a bid date on it. Package is ready to go, but once council approves the budget, we'll set a bid date on it. And just to update where we stand with our COVID mitigation measures, unfortunately, our town policy closed public. April 13th, we reduced our week to 30 hours a week. And this week, we issued the homemade mask protection bill. And I'd like to thank Jamie Hall. She provided those for our employees, and they're greatly appreciated.
Right, yay, Jamie.
That's great.
Well, staff have all the supplies they need, Kenny?
No.
Yes, they, yeah, they do have all the supplies they need now.
They've got the mask and the gloves they need to be protected to do their work.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Back on the flowers back on. Of course, we know that money needs to be used, I think it's June or July, and just wanted to know the balance. Do we need to go ahead and put an order in for the digital pedestrian signs so that money is spent? I just don't want to have to give any money back.
Here, here.
Already did, purpose stores already did touch those.
Awesome. Good, good.
I'm sorry, whoever was speaking. Was that all you had in your report, Kenny?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, council members, I don't think we've had any meetings of any committees since the last meeting we had. Does anyone have a report of anything else?
No, ma'am.
Well, I have some committee reports whenever you're, want me to give them.
Yes, please.
Okay, this is Martha here. The March 24th TAC meeting was canceled, but they are going to have the April 28th TAC meeting. It's supposed to be a web meeting. I haven't gotten the instructions yet, but surely I will be getting that. And I don't know if y'all read today. I saw where DOT is placing all their projects on hold for the next 12 months due to budget outfall of the CB19. So they said the, all the projects that are in progress or have been awarded should stay on schedule. But I will ask them about our Oakdale Road project week to see where the- But I will ask them about our Oakdale Road project week to see where that might be. I'm afraid there may be a 12 month delay in that, but I'll ask about that. I did want to say the complete count census committee has not met since March the 4th. But I would like to note that the census deadline has been extended to August the 14th. And we're still asking people to please fill out their census forms because it's important to federal funding for planning of new schools, for our number of North Carolina congressional seats, among other things. So you should be seeing some messages on your water bills, reminding you about the census. And they've got town Facebook posts or go to 2020census.gov and you can fill it out online by phone or by mail. We did have Park Plan Steering Committee yesterday. That was a Zoom meeting that was presided by Benchmark. I don't know if Matt wants to give any information on that, but the main thing is we do have a survey that's out now live. We add, the deadline is May the 15th to fill it out. You can find that on the town's website, the town's Facebook page, or you can go to the project website, which is www-envisionjamestown.com. www-envisionjamestown.com. Envision is E-N-V-I-S-I-O-N. Another meeting will be scheduled towards the end of May. And they're also discussing ways to have public engagement during such time until we can have in-person meetings. But that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Martha. Does anyone else have a report?
No, ma'am.
No.
Do you have any other business that you would like to discuss?
Well, this is Martha here. I'm getting my notes. Can you hear me okay?
You sound good.
All right. And then I will be quiet. I'll probably. I did want to give a big shout out. I saw that the 2015 sanitation truck was paid off. And I'll say yay, Jamestown. Also, I want to say happy Municipal Clerks Week to Katie in May. Hopefully, we can do something by then to celebrate your Municipal Clerks Week. That's always an exciting week, I think. Bummer note, Alan Johnson recently passed away. He's 86 years old. Many of you know him. No, he graduated from Jamestown High School in 1951. And he was a veteran of the United Air Force, a lifelong member of the Jamestown United Methodist Church. And he was heavily involved in the preservation of the Jamestown Library, which was the Jamestown Public School. And he served as trustee on that library board for many years. So I would like to request the town council, prepare a resolution in his honor. And also would like to ask to have research done as to prepare a plaque to go on the memorial wall that is at the library. I know staff will have to do some research on price and a vendor and bring it back to the council for approval. And I would be happy to help in those efforts, but just asking the mayor and the council's blessings on doing this.
Get my support.
Yes.
Do you need a formal motion, Katie?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right. I would appreciate it and I'll be glad to help in any way I can with that information.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mayor, I would like to recognize Matt Johnson and Sharon After for pulling this meeting together, the virtual meeting. I appreciate the work.
Yes.
We will do our best to improve audio as we move along. We were not able to even purchase new equipment just due to the fact that it was not available.
You did good with what you had.
Definitely.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other old business or other business they would like to bring before the council at this time?
No, ma'am.
We had had some discussions and I don't know, I maybe should have added this to the new business, but I know over time, we've talked about raising the lowest pay of folks for the town to 15 an hour. And seeing, Judy did a great job pulling together numbers on that and who that impacts. And it is folks who are in sanitation and public works. And you know, not, not that we don't every day appreciate the guys out there doing that work, but certainly now I think everybody fully understands, you know, that this is, this is really important work just keeping us going. And they don't have the option of, of working from home or doing a Zoom meeting to call into something. And so, you know, I would be interested in putting forth, how do we get those folks up to $15 an hour prior to any cost of living increases or merit pay increases that would come with the budget? Is there? What would be the best way to go about that? And is there support for that? I guess that should be.
Oh, yeah.
There's support.
Yes, Rebecca, definitely. I would support that.
Ditto.
Lawrence, you're wearing a mask. Yay or nay or?
Judy, would that be part of the budget process that we're working on?
The question I have about that is we've just got to be even across the board. We're going to bring somebody 14.5 up to 15. And somebody who's 15 or 5 is going to leave them at that, then I think it's a little, there's no equity in that. So we follow in that. So I think it has to be looked at more than just saying bringing everybody who's close up to 15.
I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Lawrence. I, I think my only thought is from Rebecca's point was to actually establish what the baseline was going to be as far as the floor, more so than trying to push equity in every direction. Because we talked about that in a previous budget meeting and it just seems like that would be a logical next step. Obviously, as we do reviews and we move forward with the other people, some of those things will align better over time. But it does allow us to set the precedent, which I think is where, correct me if I'm wrong Rebecca, but I think that's where you were going.
Right, and that's, that's why I was suggesting doing it before any of the other pay increases. And also, this is only, it is a small number of people and they are almost at 15 anyway. So we're not, we're not talking about, you know, upping somebody 10 bucks an hour by any means.
Not a huge amount of money.
Right, and I, and I agree. I mean, I want things to be equitable. I think this is less about, you know, looking at everybody's individual performance and, and giving them a bonus on that. And this in itself is just more about what, what do we want to do as a town? And what do we believe is, is the right thing to do? And I think 15 is, you know, the place to start for that.
Right.
I agree with you on the start point. I disagree on not making it applicable for everybody involved. I've been through many different case studies. You don't have to frame it below and just go to a certain point and don't touch the others regardless of merit or anyone else there that might be in it.
What we'll do is look at the, if we raise money to 15, start looking at positions above that and make sure that they're not, somebody doesn't hassle or they get too close. But that'll be part of the budget process and we'll bring y'all in as we move along.
So you're going to bring more information to the council?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Will.
Yeah, because I have a hard time understanding Lawrence's, all of his points of view, so yeah. But I definitely, Rebecca, I'm in support of your idea.
I agree with what you said, Martha, at first. Like you said, whether I was in support of you, yes, I'm in support. Yes, I am in support. But I think there's deeper than just saying bringing everybody close to 15. I think it needs to be looked at across the board for each and every person involved. Because when you start bringing somebody who's less than 15 up to 15, you're bringing together a gap. This is a problem. It existed because of time, service, merit, those sort of things. But a little deeper than just saying everybody starts at 15. You can go forward with that, but you have to adjust the others in this.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, we'll need to have the manager and the finance director supply us that information.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you all.
Anyone else with other business?
I hope we can be together soon.
Yes. If we have no other business, do I motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of you participating in this Zoom meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
We made it work.